Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 8 to order. So we'll have a moment of silence in a second, so a lot of things going on, so whatever you're thinking about, but I just want to say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Season Greetings, Happy Holidays, whatever your thing is, I hope your family's well, I hope you're safe, I hope if you're traveling, you and your family are safe in your travels, and whether they're coming here or you're going somewhere, I wish you the best, I hope everything is good and well for your family, and during this season of peace and giving, that everybody is able to enjoy that, so a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Grip, if you'd lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Brian, City Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Grip?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council, I again like to welcome everybody here in attendance and anybody who's viewing the meeting through any particular mobile device or electronic thing. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, please keep in mind, though, that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters, anybody without, throughout the region. We're happy you're participating, as you said, every city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place for everyone, especially for the folks in here, if you have a cellphone, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent or turn it off, just simply because if someone's talking, it just doesn't get in the way. If you wish to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you, address the council as a whole and not to any one individual person. Please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. We'll be respectful of you, please be respectful of us. Thank you very much. First item, will an Alderman please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for November 23?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Cory Spiegel, City Administrator, update any, please.
It's a reminder that this is our last meeting of the year of this council, so I greatly appreciate your trust and dedication over what I hope will be the weirdest two years of my career, and we will see you back in early January, ready to go with the fiscal '23 budget.
Well, '23, okay, thank you. Next item, will an Alderman please move approval of the committee, the whole, for December 1, 2021?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one appointment tonight, Affirmative Action Advisory Commission, Ruby Batama, is a new appointment, I'll accept a motion for that.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you for your continued service. Petition Communications are next, so I'm gonna go first and do a little recognition here, so.
All right, Mr. Dorman, if you'd be kind enough to stand up. So Alderman Dorman's been with us two years, it's been great to have him on the council and provide those wonderful ideas that you have, so a token of the city's appreciation is some pictures of you and places that are significant to the city, so on behalf of the city, thank you for your service to Davenport.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ambrose. So Mr. Ambrose, for folks who don't know, potentially, we believe, has been the longest-serving City Council person in the history of Davenport, so that service is appreciated, and we thank you very much. Again, a picture of you and some pictures of your time here, and we thank you for the service to Davenport.
That's all the pictures you could get?
Well, so thank you very much.
Alrighty, so again, I said my piece, but again, please be safe, please enjoy the holidays, whatever your particular persuasion is, we wish you the best, we wish your family the best, and look forward to seeing everybody after the New Year, so council folks, Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, next Tuesday, December 14, will be Sixth Ward meeting, 6:30 PM at Duck Creek Park Lodge, we will be blessed to have Nicole Gleason from Public Works giving us a little bit of seasonal information. Next, I want to, you know, wish Alderman Dorman, Alderman Ambrose, well, going forward, it's been a pleasure with you for these last two years, got nothing but respect for the both of you, for the rest of us, hopefully have a good holiday season for those we don't get to see before the New Year, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Grip.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. First off, I wanted to just give some recognition for the Kris Kendall Market this past weekend, it was incredible, it was fun, it had a vibe, it was well-attended, that is an event that started off very small just a few years ago, and is growing really nicely into what is going to be a signature event for Davenport and for the Quad Cities, so, you know, Steve Aron's from the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Lori Beeman from the Farmer's Market, and Sarah from the, what organization is she with? Yeah, Sarah from Sister Cities, thank you, thank you, Mayor, from Sister Cities, they worked incredibly hard this past weekend, they probably put in 18 hours a day for three consecutive days to put that on, and it was just really impressive to see and to see it grow, looking forward to what it is next year. And then I also wanted to recognize the two departing Aldermen, first Alderman Dorman, I've really appreciated working with you over the last two years, for a few different reasons, the first is your fresh and young perspective on the city of Davenport and the way a city should be run and operated, and to be honest, if we're going to be competitive in the years ahead, we need to understand how do we keep the Matt and Mary Dorman's of the world in our city, and if we can do that, we'll be successful. Also, you've brought a great knowledge of business and finance and accounting to the city, and I've appreciated that, and your advocacy for the Fourth of July, which was second to none, Modern Woodman Park, which I had heard from somebody, you single-handedly saved minor league baseball in the city of Davenport, the Riverfront, the East Village, and the Hilltop, you were an advocate for all of those in the last two years, and I think you did a great job representing the city, so thank you for the work you've done, but also I'd encourage you, you know, please can continue to be involved in the city of Davenport and help us to make it a better place. And then Alderman Ambrose, I wanted to congratulate you on a very impressive run on the City Council, the longest-seated City Council member in the history of our city, which goes back coming up on 200 years, right? That's a pretty incredible accomplishment, so when I first started, or when you first started on the City Council, I was a freshman in high school, when I bought my first house, you were my ward Alderman for eight years, and when I decided to run for the City Council, I knocked on a lot of doors, it was very apparent that you understood the people in your ward, you understood their needs, you addressed their issues, and you cared about them, and to have such longevity on the City Council, I think you have to have two things, you've got to represent the people who vote for you, which you absolutely do, but you also have to have a big why, why are you doing this? You know, being on the City Council isn't easy, most of the time it's not fun, to do it for as long as you've done, again, it's impressive, and I know that you have a big why, you love the city of Davenport, and you want to serve the people in the best interest of the city, and I have that same why, and that's why I've appreciated the decades that you've given to this city, so I'd like to congratulate you, thank you, thank your wife, because it's a family commitment, and just wish you the best of luck as a regular, everyday citizen in 2022. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Lee.
Wow, how do I follow that? Good. And thank you, I enjoyed working with you both, I know, Ray, we've been on opposite ends of lots of spectrums, but I've always appreciated your point of view and your approach, so thank you, and thank you, Matt, too, I've really enjoyed working with you over the last couple of years, and very impressed with your intelligence and your ability to communicate that, so carry on. I also want to say tomorrow night is the last Eighth Ward meeting of this year, we're going to have Chad Dyson and Mike Shertz, the Eighth Ward Representative on the Park Board, talking about the Park Comprehensive Plan and things, park things going on in the Eighth Ward, as well as some other directions we're going in the city, and this, again, is open to anyone, if you're interested in parks, you're welcome to come, it's at 6 o'clock, it's going to be at the Eastern Library, and again, it's tomorrow night, so anyone is welcome, and I hope to see you all there. I'll also be having the last Goose Creek Neighborhood, Good Neighbor Program meeting on the 16th, and we're going to be talking about some of the roads that just got very needed fixed in the Goose Creek Neighborhood, so that's going to be on Zoom at 6 o'clock as well, so that's it for the year, and I look forward to next year, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I just wanted to wish everybody, whatever your holiday is, that it's a happy one, that I hope you can be with family, or they can be with you, and it has been a very interesting year, again, lots of challenges for the city, of course, and for her residents, so looking forward to 2022. There will be no Third Ward meeting this month, but they will commence again in January, and it'll be the third Monday again of the month, right here in Chambers at 6:30, so that's the plan right now, so I will see those of you in Third Ward here next month, and of course, you can certainly reach out. I did want to say to the departing Aldermen, Matt, I've enjoyed sitting next to you, and the wards we represent are close together and share some of the same issues, and I certainly have appreciated your energy and your skills, your energy, we might not have agreed on scooters, but perhaps someday, in any case, but I certainly wish you the best, and thank you so much for your service, and Ray, you know, you have always been, over the years, as I've come to council, and we fought for our neighborhoods, you've always, always fought for neighborhoods, I want you to know, I always knew that, and I always told people that, that, you know, when we weren't sure where people were going to fall, when we were here asking for something, we could almost always count on Ray for being in our corner, and that is greatly appreciated and greatly needed, so I certainly wish you all the best, and again, thank you so much for your service, and I've certainly enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor, I also wanted to recognize our two colleagues here, when you first get elected, you think, or at least I thought, that I'd be invited up into the treehouse, and we'd all get to hang out together quite a bit, but open meeting law is pretty effective, and you don't get to know your colleagues quite as well as you'd like, and that's too bad, because I'm really fond of all of you, and Alderman Dorman, I've always appreciated your executive level of thinking, anybody who I cross paths with at Deere, I can tell you guys have all been trained to really critically think through problems, and I appreciated having that here on the council, you always did your homework, you moved on things in between meetings, and made sure that you were ready to try to affect change in the city. I appreciate you for trying to be funny and sometimes succeeding, that's not very easy to do from up here, which I learn on a weekly basis, not always appreciated, but the city of Davenport's not done with you yet, and I hope you find whichever way you choose to circle back around and get involved, so look forward to that. Alderman Ambrose, I knew when I got elected that you played for the other team, and you were supposed to be the boogeyman, and I hope it's okay that I use this as a bit of a parable, because as soon as I was seated next to you, I found out that you're a swell guy, and that as long as you love the city of Davenport, you're going to have more in common with Alderman Ambrose than you will ever have not in common with him, and I really appreciated your love of the city, really appreciate all that you've given to the city. Whenever I do something irresponsible in life, I've come to shout that I'm a pillar in the community, and you truly are a pillar in the community, I hope to accomplish a fraction of what you've done for Davenport, and you'll be greatly missed here on the council, so thank you both, and good luck moving forward.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor, first off, I just have to say thank you to everyone, the people truly are what makes a great city, and there's great people here working for the city of Davenport, all of staff, you guys have all been great to work with, and I know that the city's in great hands, and great people also leading the city here on City Council, so I've enjoyed working with every one of you, and diving deep into some problems and seeing our differences, but knowing that in the end, we all just have maybe a little bit different vision of what we see future Davenport is, but ultimately, we all care about Davenport, and that's what we want. Alderman Grip, the one thing that we could do, and the business community really should do, in order to keep the Dorman's here in town a little longer, would be have at least one bar or restaurant around here that would play the Cyclones game, even if there's an Iowa Hawkeye game going on at the same time, we run into that every place we go, it seems like there's nothing but Hawkeyes around, but we've been slowly and surely growing that, so that hopefully will change here soon more, but the one thing I've really realized throughout this time is that in order to stay relevant as a city, in order to continue to grow and to continue to attract new people to your town, you really have to have the mindset of giving people things to do, everyone wants to make Davenport their home, or whatever community it is, and so I've realized there's been multiple times and multiple things, whether I've attended them as an elected official, or someone brought a concern to me, or asked about a new item, that it might not be my thing to do, but it's someone's thing to do, and so recognizing that we are all different, and that we all have our own likes and interests, but together, it brings us all together to make it a real community and a real home that people want to stay, that's, I think should be the number one goal, so I just kind of ask for council, when you guys think about goals and things to continue to make Davenport better, it might not be your thing to do, but it's probably someone's thing to do, and so keeping that in mind when you think about what new projects and items to bring to town, I think is a great perspective, and lastly, I don't know who here brought this, but I'd love to end with a sip of the coffee from my Dunbro coffee mug here, and so, Rick, it's been a real pleasure sitting next to you and being on Public Works with you, I know you've taught me quite a bit, and including how to grow a mean mustache, so thank you to whoever got this, this will get a lot of use in the future, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman, thought you would have learned the lesson with the tie thing, but, and I'm happy to get you another one if you'd like, so, all right, all right, Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Your Honor, kind words, and I appreciate it, you know, I strongly believe that Davenport is America's greatest city, you want to know why I have been here for 25 years, because when I started, it wasn't as great as it is today, and today, I'm incredibly proud of our great city, you know, it's been a joy working with this council, and this mayor, and all the other councils and mayors, we have outstanding staff, Team Davenport, and I don't think Davenport's ever been in this good a shape, you know, I live, very simple means, you know, I treat people the way I want my family treated, I was elected to serve the people of Davenport, and I've had a great joy trying to help the people of the great Fourth Ward, so as we move forward, the only advice I can give you is you overtax, you overregulate, you kill the economy, we're going into a budget, and the economy is struggling right now, so I really hope we tighten the belt and don't give any additional tax burden to the good people of Davenport, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, so if we could give a little round for the two departing members. So I gave you my little things, but don't be shy and keep us on our toes, so, anyone else? Thank you very much, okay, we'll move to the discussion agenda, and there's a couple items, so the first one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled Precincts and Wards to Establish Precinct and Ward Boundaries Based Upon the 2020 Census, is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman please move second consideration?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion from alderfolks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for second consideration.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Anne McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, ordinance moves the third consideration, and now staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage right now on third consideration, so first, is there a motion for suspension of the rules? Motion and a second, Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Dickman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Anne Cornet?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, the rules are suspended, so is there a motion for passage on third consideration?
Second.
Motion and a second, Brian, please call the roll for passage on third consideration.
Cornet?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
And Ambrose? Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, that passes, and we have established new precincts and wards, then number two is a resolution opposing any plans to redevelop the site at West Fourth and Warren Streets for a new larger Scott County Juvenile Detention Center, is there any public with comment? Seeing none, Alderman, please move the resolution, okay, if there's someone to comment, please come forward, and it would be helpful, so I know, if the next person could be standing, that would be, or at least let me know by waving your hand, so, thank you, you'll have five minutes, please state your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, thank you very much.
I'm from here, I'm Mary Maher, I live on Davie Street. Mayor and City Council members, I'm very encouraged that the council is proposing sending a resolution to the Scott County Board of Supervisors opposing the building of a larger juvenile detention center in our downtown area with no input from our city. I think that maybe a newer center needs to be built with more amenities to better serve our youth, but not a larger one. ARPA funds were sent to this community to rescue us from the ravages of COVID, not to further incarcerate our youth, so I don't believe ARPA funds should be even used to build a new facility, but that the question should be put to the community in the form of a referendum. Also, I am very encouraged with another resolution you are considering, namely the one awarding a contract to National Network for Safe Communities. After reading an article in the Quad City Times, I think this is a program that can really help our community as a whole, it looks like it will be a great new violence prevention initiative, it will be tough on offenders while letting people in the cycle of violence have options, and will above all, give them hope, I think this is the hope I've been looking for, for this city, and lastly, with the council's comments that you gave last week, it sounds like you are already willing and able to communicate and work with the Board of Supervisors to come up with a possible solution to our juvenile offender problem. In thanksgiving, gratitude, and awe, I thank you all for what you do for our city.
Thank you.
Sorry, I kind of jumped.
All good, ma'am, thank you, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else? Okay, will an Alderman please move the resolution? Motion and a second, any comment from alderfolks? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor, just wanted to speak for a moment, I really appreciate everyone who came this week and came last week, the emails that I've received this week from folks about this resolution, and their love of the city, their concern for the children, and I want to commend this council as well, you know, we don't often, and Alderman Grip spoke to this last week, we don't often comment on the actions of other governing bodies, so this is an extraordinary request of this council to pass this in some ways, but in looking at this council's record over the last year, and thinking about this over the last week, some of the things that were said here last week, I looked back at our ARPA dollars, and this council, I think, did a wonderful job in looking at, there are many things in the ARPA funding for the city that we have looked at, many ways that we have looked at to find a way to deal with some of the issues that we have with young people and with disadvantaged populations in our city, direct things like, the things that we funded are things like the Youth Assessment Program, a Violence Interrupters Program that were, this is the motion that's before us or in our consent agenda, this is very new, the library, everything for the library that we committed was for a community center that specifically will have gym space, will have space for kids to do after-school stuff, to, a place that they can come, a social worker in the library, a pre-K literacy initiative for the library, all focused on this issue that we're dealing with children, we set aside money for enhancements to neighborhood parks that are in our low to moderate income census tracts, so that they, that kids can have a richer recreational experience there, looking at the Martin Luther King Interpretive Center and setting aside money for that, and then, and that doesn't even include the money that we've set aside for neighborhood revitalization, regional transitional housing, dealing with flooding, these kind of other issues we have in our city, and some of the others, I totaled them up, and the total for that, excluding the housing and those other housing-type things, is $9.2 million of the money that we had directly toward youth, and toward novel and different ways of dealing with the problems that we all face as a community, and I think that's a remarkable record for this council, and I just wanted to call that out tonight, I think in the time when we look at all these things that come in front of us, that, you know, looking at the things specifically that we did fund, and this was out of 58 different options, these rose to the top, I think this council has been listening to what the communities, the conversation that we've been having among the community the last couple of years, and the issues before our country and before our community, and I really appreciate working with you, and certainly hope you can support this resolution as part of that, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor, I agree with Alderwoman McGinnis, you know, the Seventh Judicial District, I've been critical of them for a long time, they are completely indifferent to the good people of Davenport, our great city and our great neighborhood, because they dump these habitual offenders back into our neighborhoods, turn in the good people of Davenport into victims of their irresponsible actions, and they can't be held accountable, so to watch the county supervisors buy into what the Seventh Judicial District says, you know, it's just shameful, and if the Scott County wants some place to put their beautiful Bucolic campus, how about a Westlake or a Scott County Park, that would be beautiful area for them to build their juvenile assessment center. That would be beautiful area for them to build their juvenile assessment center, give the troubled kids a nice wholesome environment away from the city, away from any environment, not in our neighborhoods and not in our great city.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Very good. And I'll just say one comment. I just want to say in general that I appreciate some of the dialogue that the council's had and some of the dialogue I've had with some of the folks in the community, especially my colleague Alderman McGinnis. And I have had some direct conversations with our friends at the county and know that we are having talks with them and trying to work through some things and that will continue. And because of the work of the council, that's helped spark some of that. So there is some of that that's happening and I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. So anyone else? Very good. All right, so we'll, any other discussion? No? So Brian, please call the roll for second, I'm sorry, for the resolution approval.
Gripp?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Anne Ambrose? Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That resolution is adopted. Thank you. Please, please. All right, next item, number three. Motion approving the following beer and liquor license application. It's for Hilltop Grocery, 1312 Harrison Street, license type Class E liquor. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from my colleagues? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am the person who asked that this be put on discussion today. In looking at the way this operates, to be classified as a grocery, the business has to have at least over 50% in grocery as opposed to alcohol and tobacco. And we receive these every year. So that's one way it's measured and it did meet the measure. It was 51% to 48. something percent last year. So it's pretty close, but it did meet that measure. The other measure is the amount of space, floor space, and that is something that we, which is 35%, it can't be more than 35% alcohol and that we can take a look at. But in looking at what the criteria are, the sales does meet the criteria right now. So I just wanted to, you know, put that before and let you know that legal had gotten that information, financial had, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, because some aldermen have concerns about small businesses in neighborhoods that sell alcohol and tobacco, you know, it's legal to sell alcohol and tobacco if you do it legally. And if you're a good neighbor. Now, these poor people, they do a great job. There's never been any issues. They've always worked with the police and along with many other small businesses that just happen to sell alcohol and tobacco. We have major retailers that sell alcohol and tobacco, just like the small businessman. You got to stop zeroing in on the poor, small businessman. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Okay. Brian, please call the roll for motion approving the beer and liquor license.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Anne McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion passes. So the next item, is there a motion for approval of all items on consent? Motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Doorman?
Abstain from number five, yes to the rest.
Thank you. Lee?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes, except for number two and number 19.
Okay. Anne Dickman?
Yes.
Okay, ten yeses with the two aldermen's abstentions and no's noted.
Thank you, Brian. So the consent passes. Next item, is there a, let's see, sorry. Any other ordinances, motions or resolutions? We do have one, so we need to suspend the rules to bring that forward. So first, is there a motion to suspend? There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll to suspend the rule so we can add this item.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Lee? Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Anne Doorman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended, so I'll read the motion. Motion awarding an engineering contract for design services associated with the West Central Park Avenue and Hickory Grove Road reconstruction project to Klinger and Associates of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $63,500. Is there any public with comment? Very good. Alderman, please move the motion. Do we have someone? Please come up. I apologize, but I move along, so. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Maher again on Davy Street. I frequently go down the street and at the one meeting you had, the listening meeting, I did bring up that the street isn't terrible, terrible in that area, especially that intersection. It's really bad and the angle of the intersection is bad. When you're trying to turn left going south, you can't see. And I'm surprised there aren't more bad accidents there. And so I'm very happy that this is getting addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Very good. Motion and a second to approve. Any comments from my colleagues? Very good. Brian, please call the roll for this motion. I apologize, didn't see you, Mr. Ambrose.
Do we have someone from staff that could come up and talk about this? This has been a huge need for a long time and my dear friend Clay has been at many ward meetings and heard about it. So what's the plan?
Clay, Mayor of Public Works, Alderman Ambrose, yes. Have heard about this project quite a bit at many of your ward meetings. So this will be the reconstruction of the intersection. So we're going to, on the north side of the project, we're going to go, I believe it's up to Pine is where the Hickory Grove project stopped. Going to go about, I think 100 feet south on the south side and on the east, we're going to Cedar and on the west is to Lincoln. One of the things that we were waiting on before performing this project, we were working with Iowa Interstate to repair their crossing, their at-grade rail crossing. They successfully did that, so that was a really terrible crossing, so they were able to complete that.